Good morning and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. This is our MBE, SBE workshop, that's our Minority Business Enterprise Workshop, Small Business Enterprise Workshop, bringing to you this morning. This is a virtual meeting. So if we could have a roll call, please.
Good morning Kemp.
Here.
Colin.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Overman.
Here.
Smith. Smith. White.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Wise.
Thank you Commissioners. Commissioners, I want to thank you for another workshop. I know that your calendars have been very busy lately, as have the calendars of staff, and so I truly am grateful for your attention today. And I'd like to also say that I appreciate Commissioner Myers' patience in scheduling of this workshop. This has been an item on her, on the future issues list for quite some time, and due to scheduling, it has taken us a little bit of time to get this scheduled and appreciate her guidance and her input in helping us to get here to this day. And today, Lindsay Kimball, our Director of Economic Development, is going to discuss our Minority and Small Business Enterprise programs, and is going to provide some history. She's going to talk about the work program and the outcomes, and also to speak about efforts for enhancement of the program. And various departments have worked together to create this presentation today, especially would like to recognize Lindsay and her team, the Economic Development Office, Procurement Communications, County Attorney's Office. I apologize if I missed anybody else. You're going to hear how these combined efforts have resulted in many positive outcomes, and we are excited about the enhancements to the program and coordinating both additionally with the community and also bringing our internal communications to a higher level. And I wanted to recognize Lindsay and her small but mighty MBE/SBE staff, who work hard every day to reach and engage businesses, not only working externally, as I mentioned, but also internally with Procurement Office especially, and all the departments. The department directors, I think, have come to a new level lately and further more to come. They are becoming much more engaged and cognizant of the benefits of incorporating an MBE/SB strategy into the success of their projects, and that is an ongoing effort internally. We know that especially during the pandemic, small and minority businesses have struggled tremendously. As you know, we used $94 million of our CARES dollars for financial assistance for local businesses with an emphasis on small and minority businesses. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay. She's going to talk about all these efforts. We are excited to share this information with you and very much looking forward to the further developments to enhance the MBE/SB community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lindsay.
Before we do that, I'd just like to recognize Commissioner Smith has joined us.
Good morning. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Okay, great. Is that okay for everyone? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you Commissioners. Appreciate the time today to be able to present to you about our MBE and SBE program. Thank you Bonnie for that wonderful introduction. It definitely has been a major team effort, and I just want to thank again everybody that has helped us get to this point and has helped us with some of the great recommendations and programmatic enhancements that we have that we'll share with you today towards the end of the presentation. I want to start and just tell you about the, sorry, go back one slide. There we go. Okay, I'd just like to tell you I've got the PowerPoint divided into three major sections. First, we're going to talk to you about the background and some of those guiding concepts for the program and what guides our operations. Then we'll go over the current work program and those outcomes that we've had in the recent years. And the most exciting part, organizational and programmatic enhancements. How can we continue to do better? How can we build? How can we achieve more? So I wanted to start with an operational framework. While the program was initiated in, all the way in, back in 1984, so it's been a longstanding program for the county, it's gone through many iterations, of course, and adjusted and flexed with the community and with the policy goals of the board. But I wanted to just share with you, I'm obviously not going to read all of these resolution numbers, but I just wanted to make the point that we have a very defined program with mature policies and processes in that our day-to-day operations are very detailed and available for review for anyone who would like to see them, but just wanted to share with you about the thoughts and how this program has evolved over time. So an MBE firm, so what do we consider to be a minority business firm? Because it's important to note that while many agencies have MBE or SBE programs, some call them DBE or disadvantaged business programs, each one of them is defined in their own way. So I think it's important to start with how we at Hillsborough County define what is a minority business. So of course, the most important thing is that it's majority controlled by that minority person or a woman. And that means that it's not just a name only, so our team does investigate any new certifications. We make sure that someone is actively engaged in management and daily operations. Also, we want to make sure that they're fulfilling a commercially useful function, which means we don't, we don't have firms that are, would just be a pass-through or a broker. The firm itself needs to be the one performing that commercially useful function. And then we have, of course, other measures, ceilings on the size and the net worth of the individual, the minority person who controls the company, because our program is tailored to assist disadvantaged minority businesses and disadvantaged small businesses. So we're trying to focus on that, that universe of companies, of minority-owned companies, and it's, has a threshold amount for net worth. So that's very important to keep in mind. And I will share as a quick preview for the end of the PowerPoint, we do have some recommendations on how to true up some of those numbers and looking to expand the group of individuals who could be qualified. Also, our small business definition is slightly different than the MBE definition. It is based on gross annual sales of the company, and the same applies to an SBE. They need to be the ones who are performing that commercially useful business function, and the SBE must be domiciled in Hillsborough County. And that's an important distinction, because the MBE firms can be located anywhere in the state. So that's a statewide collection of firms. The SBE program is specific to Hillsborough County. So one of the most important guiding concepts of the MBE and SBE program are goals instead of quotas. So what that means is that there's, there's no program in, in the United States where you can say, "We're always going to have 40% on all construction projects, regardless of what's actually being done or who actually exists in the market." That would be a quota. So we can't do that. We have to set goals. So we set goals based on the availability of ready, willing, and able minority firms. So it's very important that we're using goals and that we are also reasonable and our goals aren't based in the reality of the marketplace in that moment. So the level playing field is also another important concept. So where, as I said, we have goals instead of quotas, we cannot set a goal unless we have at least three firms in any established category. So the purpose of that is we are, we have to avoid creating a monopoly from one firm who then could control all the pricing and, you know, also frankly, would, would just have an unfair advantage against other firms. So there's this concept as well of a level playing field. And you might think, you know, I think the intuitive thing is to think, "Oh, you're leveling the playing field for the MBE." It's actually level, they say leveling the playing field for the primes. So we have to make sure that we have at least three MBE or SBE firms to set a goal or to do an SBE set aside. That's very important, because it underscores why it's so important for us to continue to increase the number of certified firms, because in any case where we have one or two firms in a, in a category, my team is not able to set a goal or include that in the percentage goal that you then see, and that's really a missed opportunity. So that's why it's so important for us to constantly increase our supply of registered firms. So to set this goal, that's so important, I just want to, the most important thing I want to leave you with today is that it's created by a committee, and the membership in that committee is very defined by our resolution, our procedures. We have folks from my, there's a person from my team, but there's also procurement and the user departments and some of what we call our power user departments, who are very involved in construction, because we rely on that team to review the project, to review its scope, and again, to make sure that it's reasonable. Is the goal that we're setting reasonable? Can those things that we are pulling out of the scope to be performed by a minority firm, is that, is it possible within the scope? Because we have to treat, because we're setting goals and not quotas, we have to be very careful that we are considering every single scope as a unique opportunity. So my team does evaluate every single scope that comes across for this goal setting. All right, and so bonus points and goals. So when you receive, when you see these agenda items, you know, sometimes you'll see where there's a goal set and that the contractor, the awardee has agreed to meet or exceed that goal. But then sometimes I know, you know, you'll see items, procurement items where it will say, "And the awardee has asked for the bonus points for MBE and has committed to a minimum of 10% with an MBE firm." So what that means is our, our program is based on construction. So we are able to set goals for construction projects. I like to say that's our, that's our bread and butter. We, we excel at doing construction projects, and our program was built around construction. What is icing on the cake, if you will, that we added in later years and around the 90s, was this bonus point concept for CCNA or those projects where you have professional services that are qualifications-based selection. So it's not going, it's not a low bid situation. It's qualifications-based or CCNA governed. So we are able to attach bonus points to that, and that's how we're able to get even more participation in, of minority firms in these procurements. And the good faith effort. So I like to say that this is a fail-safe valve to allow us to, again, make sure that our program is tested in the market and that it's reasonable and that it's fair. So we're, you know, right now, we're at a time where construction is go-go again, and all of our firms are very, very busy, which is great. That's a good story that they're busy. So it might be that, you know, we know, we look in our files and we know our database, we've got X number of firms available, so we set a goal. Let's say we set the goal at 20% for a construction project. The bidders go out, they try to get matched with firms, and it might be that the MBE firm told them, "Look, we appreciate you calling us, but we're slammed. We're busy right now. I've, there's no way. I have no capacity." And we certainly don't want a firm overextending themselves, because that's not good for anybody either. That can also, that could bankrupt a small business. So we, we want to be careful. We want to be flexible. And through this good faith effort, the, the potential bidders are able to complete a form and demonstrate very comprehensively that they have tried to out every single firm in this category, and they've gotten a response from them, and we were able to verify that response that they weren't able to accept the subcontracting opportunity at that time. So in that way, we're able to, either the, the goal percentage will get reduced some, some way, you know, based on the amount of firms that were too busy to participate with them or not interested. So then it allows a valve for those prime contractors to still bid on projects and not be disqualified, unfairly disqualified, because, you know, we thought there were firms out there, and maybe there were, but, you know, we didn't have the up-to-date market knowledge on how busy they were. Or maybe it was just something that was too specialized, or they just didn't want to do the project. Maybe they didn't want to. So, you know, that good faith effort is also very important for us to ensure that our goals do not become unrealistic quotas. So in summary, these are really the top concepts that I wanted to leave you with that are really important to understanding our MBE program. Goals, goals, goals. We have goals. We don't have quotas. We have good faith efforts to allow firms to show they were trying to do the right thing, and it was just impossible, and we aren't able to hold that over them. There's the two-prong test or strict scrutiny, that, you know, there's a compelling need for a program and that we are tailoring it to meet a past discrimination. Also, that level playing field concept, that's why we have to have three firms. We can't create monopoly situations. Ready, willing, and able firms, again, why we have the good faith effort. An MBE program is a race and gender conscious program. So therefore, we are required to have an SBE program, which is race and gender neutral. So there is a rule that if you have a gender conscious program, race conscious program, you must also balance that with a neutral program. So that's the purpose of the SBE program with the MBE. And then many firms are certified as both, and both are intended to assist disadvantaged businesses. So I say that because there are some agencies who, you know, there's no cap on the net worth of the MBE. There's no cap on their sales. It could be a billion-dollar minority company. They could still be qualified and still get an advantage, even though they're doing a billion dollars a year in sales and have 1,000 employees. So ours is tailored to being for disadvantaged businesses, both minority and small businesses. Now I want to transition into our current work program. A lot of what our team does, and thank you Bonnie for recognizing, we have a very small and mighty team, and they're a wonderful group of three who are doing all of this work and reviewing all these scopes and, and maintaining compliance on all these contracts. But our, our flagship event is the Open Doors Forum, which, the picture there is from one of our recent open doors when that is dead. It's a pre-COVID picture. So we have a, a pre-COVID, we had a lot of handshaking, a lot of conversation, but our last one this year was, did have to be virtual, but it is attended, very well attended. It's grown every year. We're in our sixth year of doing that. Generally, we draw about 300 people, but it's a major event in the community to draw prime contractors. We draw our partners, over a dozen other agencies, like the port and the airport and the city, USF, Moffitt, Tampa General, all of our good partners are there, and the prime contractors wanting to just make connections and network and be able to learn about upcoming projects. So it's a really important event for us. It usually happens in the spring. We also have community engagement. So the, the team is engaged along with our, our small business team out of the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center. That picture is actually from the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center, or ECC. It's important for us to be out in the community, supporting our partners, the NAACP, MedWeek, East Tampa Symposium, the USF Supplier Diversity Day, City of Tampa Bridges to Business. We are supportive of all of our local minority-focused business groups and professional organizations. So we are, we're always trying to engage with them, support them, and also, you know, we are working on project-specific outreach. If there is a major project, we work with the user departments and try to be there for those early-on matchmaking opportunities between primes and subs, because it's, it's all about marketing and awareness and raising that awareness. We also have workshops and training. So part of our mission is not just to, you know, set the goals on contracts and make sure people are doing what they're supposed to do and registering people, but another goal is capacity building. So we want to help these minority businesses get stronger. One of our most popular programs is the Small Contractor Development Program. That picture there is from a recent class, pre-COVID, at the ECC, where they are learning about bonding and financial accounting, human resources, general management topics. But it's a four-week class that we repeat twice a year. And we also have other, other workshops there that you can see listed. Just want to point out as well, we also offer these courses in Spanish and English for Hispanic MBEs and SBEs, and we work in tandem with our SBDC team at the ECC, our Small Business Development Center team there. So we've got really a lot, a lot of resources to help minority businesses connect with information and knowledge and also access to capital. We've got a really strong SBDC team with a lot of strong financial connections and knowledge and skills that help them also access to capital, which is so important and often such a roadblock for minority businesses. These are just some of the upcoming activities that we have in the next few months that we'll be participating in, the NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner. We are its sponsor, and staff is very engaged. We support the event as well with advertising within the program. MedWeek is coming up later in October. We get our sponsoring. Our, our team is very involved also in the board of MedWeek. The economic development team is very engaged in that event. Also, doing business with Hillsborough County will be at the All Peoples Life Center on November 4th. We'd love to see everyone there. We'll be increasing certifications. We'll have onsite registration and beginning of the certification process for firms, as well as presentations that will be interactive from our team and procurement on how to get registered, how to get certified. And also, we appreciate our friends at Capital Projects being engaged as well. They'll be presenting some of their major upcoming projects that will be opportunities for them, and we'll have booths and information to share with people. So we're very excited about that event. These are some of the stats, the, the hard numbers. So I just want to focus on, you know, the number sometimes will go up and go down, and there's some jumps there. And there are some footnotes that, that you can read, but the short version is, in any one year, you can imagine the county buys a very diverse and different basket of goods. So when we do a lot of construction and big construction projects, like we had the Northwest Project, which helped out at the MBE program tremendously, and some other larger construction projects, we do really well. You know, there was a drop-off for 2020 due primarily to some of the slowdowns and pauses, you know, and we didn't really know, nobody knew what was going on. So there were some pauses in construction projects, some declines due to that uncertainty of COVID-19. So there's that, but there's also, you have to look at, were there goods and services perhaps that, you know, are not, don't lend themselves to MBE participation? For example, you know, a really obvious example are plane tickets, you know? I mean, if we suddenly were buying a lot of that or, or certain goods from a store, you know, there's not a lot of opportunity for subcontracting there, because it's, it's one supplier. Or maybe you're buying a huge purchase from, from Microsoft or software. You know, that's, you know, that's pretty much commoditized at this point. So there's not a lot of, of opportunity. And, you know, during the COVID time, we did have a lot of emergency purchases, a lot of really kind of odd things that we weren't usually purchasing as a county. So that's another reason for that. But what I would ask that you focus on is the overall trend line. So looking at this from the past 10 years of what's happened, the actual dollar amount spent in 2020 was 10 times greater than that in 2021. So we have to kind of keep our eye more on normalizing this, you know, this bar graph here and this line graph. And if we look at the trend numbers and understand what's going on, I think that's, that's the real story. And it's a very positive story when you're considering where we started in 2011, at least when I, I got here around 2012. And so we began a really focused effort on making the program stronger. And our certification numbers, so these are the last six years of those certifications. And sometimes people will join the program, sometimes they graduate out of the program, because they get, they get big because of what they've done. But, you know, we want to see the trend of these numbers, you know, always increasing. And our 2020 number there was the highest we've had it in the history of the program. We've got nearly 1,000 firms registered, and we're looking to exceed that when we get our final 2021 numbers shortly. So our firm monitors over 1,000 active contracts that the county has for MBE and SBE compliance. And it's not just a desk function. It's also going out to the construction sites, monitoring who is there, who's actually doing the work. Sometimes, you know, we need to make sure that it's the firm that the prime said was going to be doing the work, really doing the work, and we also verify that payment was actually made to the MBE. So we have a process to certify and make sure there's compliance with those payments to the minority firms as well. And we also are able to, we try to resolve any disputes that might arise and help them get to a resolution between the primes and subs. And if something happens and maybe a, a sub drops out, we, our first goal is to try and replace them with another minority sub and keep the project moving forward. And so, looking forward, we'd like to tell you about some organizational and programmatic enhancements for FY '22. And again, I want to say thank you. This has been four months in the making. Thank you so much to Commissioner Myers, who has really worked closely with my team on a, on a weekly basis of identifying those procedures or tweaks to the program that we can do to make it better. You know, we always want to get better, and I appreciate Commissioner Myers for always sharing that with our, our team. She has told me that it's about, it's about getting better, and I firmly believe in that in all things. You know, we always should strive for improvements and always trying to be better than we were the day before. So I appreciate that. I also want to appreciate all of the time that Scott Strommer and his team have spent for procurement, helping us work through these county attorney's office, communications, working with us on some of these outreach suggestions. So I really appreciate it. And again, these are enhancements that we're suggesting. A lot of these things, you know, we can do immediately, and we actually have been doing them immediately, as Bonnie mentioned. But some of them, we will need to bring back to you in the form of a resolution, an amendment to the existing resolution, because some of those things are codified within that. But let me start by saying, from an organizational perspective, we plan to elevate the MBE and SBE program to a division-level function. So we have gotten approval, and thank you very much for everyone who was part of that, to hire an experienced division director, which will report directly to- to hire an experienced division director, which will report directly to an assistant, the Assistant County Administrator, Ron Barton of Economic Prosperity. I think that that is really important. At one time in the history of the program, this was its own department, MBE was its own department, and it had that mantle and that visibility of, of being an independent department or division. And I personally thought it was really important. It's, it's not, you know, of course, I don't want to lose one of my favorite programs. But, you know, I, it's important for the organization. It's important for, for the visibility of the program and to do what's right and what's best for it, for it to become its own division. And economic development is always here, and we're going to be joined at the hip to support the capacity building, the training, all of the resources of the Entrepreneur Center. So I, I just think it's, it's really important that, that decision was made to create that division and to hire two more minority outreach contract compliance staff to join the complement of the existing really hard-working staff of three. That would give us a complement of six staff focused on MBE/SBE. And that would be, it's going to go a long way, I think, to helping with the workload and with the need to really get more aggressive with the program. The county administrator, Bonnie's mentioned that she is leading that culture change in all of the, with all the directors. And we hear that bi-weekly at our agenda reviews about the importance of that. So I, I do see that. And I really want to appreciate, all of the directors have been wonderful and just really supportive and, and helped us along the way. So I just want to say thank you to them. They've really internalized the MBE program. You know, it's, I always say, it's, it's not the economic developments policy. It's not my, it's not Lindsey Kimble's program. It's the county's program with a capital C. So it's, it's everybody's. We all own it and it's important, should be important to everybody. So we want enhanced collaboration as well and a better alignment and visibility for the importance of equity and inclusion. So again, elevating, elevating the conversation, I think, is going to be important. We already have implemented this approach on contract renewals, modifications. Procurement is very aggressive with now reducing the number of cooperative bids, piggybacking, some people call it state contracts. The reason why this is important is because we are unable to set a goal on any sort of procurement, like a sole source or a piggybacking, a state contract. Because, number one, most of the time, those firm, those agencies have already established a goal, which is great. And if they have, that's wonderful. State does a great job. FDOT does a good job. That's fine. But we need to know that. And we also, you know, if we're piggybacking, we also aren't controlling the, the contract and its management. So we also are not able to set a goal on that. So that's why it's important to keep those as minimal as possible. We're unbundling larger contracts. We've already been doing that for a while to facilitate more SBE set-asides and MBE participation. These are small firms. I mean, they can't, you know, if, if you've got the entire, let's say, I'm just, just an example, a mowing contract. If you have to mow the entire county and all 1,200 square miles of it, that's a little daunting for a small business. But if we can divide them up into zones, maybe five zones, six zones, eight zones, which we have done, we're very grateful for that, then you can start doing set-asides. Then it's manageable. It's a manageable bite for someone to start to work with the county. So that's why that's important. And again, requiring project-specific outreach events. Our current threshold is 20 million. We recommend at least a 5 million, maybe a 2 million or higher requirement for project-specific outreach events. Promoting an annual procurement plan and establishing those routine network events. So we want to increase the number of events that we're doing. We want to, you know, have the annual procurement plan readily available and is very visible and out in the community so that subs know what's coming up and they know where they can plug into the county. We would like to propose increasing, this will require a resolution change, which we'd bring back later. But we would propose that we increase the value of the bonus points. Right now, they get five points on a 100-point scale. We would propose 10 points. Obviously, it makes it more valuable because if, if, if we know that the range of acceptable scores is really wide and then couple that with, you only get five points for doing it, we, we really are finding that some firms are just like, eh, we'll let it ride. You know, if the eligible point spread is from 60 points to 100, you know, I mean, does five points really matter? So I think it's a combination of closing the qualification amount, maybe, and also increasing the number of bonus points. And we, we would develop routine reports and dashboards for the MBE and SBE utilization. We do already with our capital improvement programs, work with them. We're part of the, the CIP meetings and we help the departments, user departments, understand where they are with their projects. That's something that we already are rolling out. And reviewing insurance requirements to ensure alternatives that maybe we could have more MBE participation in some of those bonding and insurance situations. Again, policy and procedures. Back to how those points are evaluated and point spread, we would like to put an MBE member more closely engaged in the evaluation process. We haven't really had the manpower to do that. So that'll be really important to be able now to have someone engaged in that directly and not sort of on the peripheral. We also would suggest that we have an MOU with our surrounding communities to allow greater certification reciprocity as we are able to allow the small business and minority businesses to certify with any of the surrounding areas and be able to qualify in our program as well. It just would make it easier. It would expand the universe of firms. Also, when we fund outside agency projects, which you've seen several of those recently, we need to make sure that they either have an established program and tell you about that as a board, so you understand that our money will still have a goal on it. But also striving to have the agency use the county's programs and our, our team will help them set a goal if they don't already have a good program. And expanding the SBE area, again, to those outside surrounding communities, clearly that's going to help increase the number of firms. And it would allow us to have a reciprocal with those counties as well. Also, these next two bullets are about accounting for not just inflation, but just from our own experience, certifying firms. Everything is, is just getting more expensive and, you know, everything from the value of, of what they're owning, which factors into their net worth, to the inflationary costs of just of construction and things that the firms have to do and charge and have. You know, we just feel we'd be in alignment with some of our sister agencies if we would increase that amount. And obviously, that'll make it easier to certify more firms. And again, increasing the number of employees for that same reason. And another, seems minor, but it would be a major change, would allow MBE firms who are the prime bidding on a contract to also get the bonus points. We currently aren't able to give bonus points. If I'm an MBE firm and I've been on a project that has bonus points, I would have to go find another MBE firm, which is, is kind of counterintuitive, to sub for me and then I get the points, even though I'm the prime and I'm, I'm an MBE. So we really want to investigate that. That would help. And that's a common complaint that we are hearing from our customers, the MBEs. Furthermore, increasing certification through market promotions that we've talked about, enhancing, working with our Communications and Digital Media Department to have a more robust marketing strategy now that we're able to deploy more robust resources. So look forward to working with them over the next few months on that. Continuing to identify community groups where we can partner. We gain a lot of strength from partnering. Again, about increasing the publication of projects in minority publications, but this is not just in the Tampa Bay area. We're taking this statewide because, as I mentioned at the beginning of the PowerPoint, an MBE can be any firm domiciled in the state of Florida. So if we can actively advertise and pursue firms in Orlando, in Miami, in Panhandle, Jacksonville, again, we're going to have more, more opportunities. And if we certify them and get them in our program, now we, we might have some instances where we can turn one company in a field to three and then we can set a goal. Because remember what I said earlier? If I only have one firm certified in an area, I still can't set a goal, even though there's someone there. So if we just get, get more people in the system, it's going to unlock more opportunities. We'd like to start at some sort of subscription-based email service for MBE firms to learn about upcoming events. And of course, more fact-finding with our MBE Advisory Committee, that we're very grateful for their service and for their always supporting the program and helping us make the program better and, and getting them out in the community at these events and helping us to fact-find about ways that we could continue to improve. And finally, capacity building. So overcoming all those barriers that I mentioned, some of the largest barriers are capital, social networks, contracting and bidding experience, making sure that your bid's presented correctly, that it's the right pricing, that you're not pricing yourself out of an opportunity, but you also don't want to misbid and then it causes you a hardship. Access to business assistance. I mentioned the ECC and all of the resources that are there. And of course, mentorship. So working with our partners who do have formalized mentorship programs and, and helping to grow those minority firms. So again, we've got, this is a flyer for one of our, our opportunities here. Supporting minority business is our business and we're constantly trying, this is one example of one of our ads. I believe this is the ad that we are placing with the NAACP brochure. So, so we are always trying to, to reach more folks and let them know, you know, there are resources. All of our services are free from our Entrepreneur Services Team DC, and they are amazing and they've, they've really changed the lives for a lot of small business owners. So kudos to them. And finally, our parameters for the future are continuing the progress made over the last decade. I showed you the increase in spending, the increase in percentage of utilization relative to total spend. The trend line is up. We have to continue to increase that. We would like to bring back to you an MBE/SBE resolution enhancements that I've mentioned about increasing utilization, increasing firms, increasing the opportunities. And finally, strengthening the capacity of our minority firms through targeted training and tools that we can leverage at the ECC. So with that, again, big, big thank you to this board. Thank you, Commissioner Myers, for working with me and my team so closely on all these improvements and on all of the suggestions. I really think, you know, we, we've come, come a long way, even in these past few months that we've begun these conversations and we, we look to the future. And at this time, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kimble. That was really informative and very comprehensive. So thank you. That was great. And I'm just going to assume I don't see hands up, but I would like to recognize Commissioner Myers first because I know that this has been something very dear to her, that she's worked on very hard. And, and I'm really, I, I should say, this is really, for me, I've been on the board four and a half years. I've never had this overview. So it's really, really helpful. But Commissioner Myers, I'm, I'm going to assume you might want to say a few words?
Absolutely. Good morning, Madam Chairman. It's amazing. I don't know what's wrong with my computer because I put my hand up on slide 22. But anyway, thank you for recognizing me. First, I would like to, I thank Lindsey Kimble, what an excellent overview of our MBE program. And also have to add in Ron Barton, the County Attorney's Office, Communication, Procurement, and any other department that assists with getting this PowerPoint ready for the entire Board and other departments and ACA to understand. Your unwavering support to ensure that our MBE/SBE program is enhanced to serve more minorities who will be seeking contracting opportunities with the county. Bonnie, thank you for your continued stellar leadership. You did not hesitate to address this issue when I brought it to your attention. Again, thank you for ensuring that inclusion, diversity, and equity is a part of your administration. And to all, let's go forward and make our MBE/SBE program the best in our region. In closing, I want to let the Board know that since we do not make motions at workshops, I will be bringing forth an agenda item at our October 6 meeting. In this agenda item, I will be seeking assistance from the staff to provide more details at the appropriate time as to what steps will be taken to provide more, to provide notice to MBE community so that they can have more time to plan and prepare for some subcontracting opportunities. This will require many departments to work within the MBE staff and communication to ensure that we are providing adequate time for these small businesses to ramp up for participation in county projects. I will also be asking staff to consider MBE, MBE contracting opportunities when the county is supplying funds to a public partner. There are many examples where we are funding projects, most recently with Tampa Bay Water and USF, where consideration should have been given to the Board's MBE objective. And lastly, I will be asking that staff inform the Board of these new policies and procedures, which Lindsey mentioned, which she's going to be bringing to us, that we work together to determine if any of the existing MBE resolutions need to be modified or supplemented. I am ecstatic with this workshop this morning. It's long overdue, but thanks to everyone again for your taking time to be on this call this morning because we have so much work to do and we know MBEs are looking for opportunities to get some opportunities within county government. Again, thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Overman, you recognized?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. Lindsey, kudos. And, and, and Ms. Wise, I would tell you, I am thrilled to see that we've done this as a public workshop. I know when, when I first joined the county and realized what our resources were in terms of dedicating to support businesses, that we were, we were working in the right direction. It was clearly from the chart that you showed, there's been a lot of good work that's being done. And I'm really thankful, Commissioner Myers, for bringing this out to a public workshop so that our communities can see the work that's being done. I'm very thrilled to see that we've focused on capacity building over the last few years and, and the work that you've made progress in that effort. I had a lot of questions as a small business owner and a minority business owner before I joined the county. Just getting certified was a, a hurdle for any small business to go, you know, how do I do this? How do I make this happen? So the investments through the ECC and the helping businesses become certified, either as an MBE or SBE or both, really matters. And I am helping folks hurdle that. And then what comes with that is all the other things that you've shown as a, a barrier, you know, being able to find capital, being able to, to build those networks so that you have possibly a partnership in working with another company that provides a, a whole solution for what the county needs to do and needs contracting. One question I still have out there, and this may just- One question I still have out there, and this may just be my not being as familiar. We've, we've focused a great deal and, and been successful in the contracting, sort of building industry. And there is still a great deal of services that we purchase from local businesses in the area of possibly social services or other types of services. And because they're different in the way they do it, or oftentimes, they're organized as nonprofits because that's sort of the way that industry provides services. Can you help me understand how that might work? Because while they're a nonprofit, they're owned by a board, but typically, they, they do still have a structure that oftentimes is established by a minority. And they are a small, technically a small business, they're just a nonprofit. How, how have we expanded that opportunity for that line of business, given that it may not be, say, the building industry? But it may be a nonprofit agency that is actually helping us in certain building elements of our work. For example, affordable housing.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. And just to clarify, so, so you are asking about setting a goal for, let's say, for an example on, you know, an affordable housing project or if we're working with a nonprofit? Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. First, I would say, so all of your affordable housing projects do come with the federal program attached to them. So Cheryl and her team work really hard on monitoring that and making sure that those goals are met. So, so in that instance, affordable housing, anything with those HUD money, there is that requirement attached to those funds. And they, they follow that and have compliance with that. As far as the nonprofits, maybe who are providing social services, that's interesting. I, I would have to go back and talk to the county attorney's office and so forth and see how that can, you know, maybe fit into our program. Because our program is basically structured around things that are bid through a procurement process. And so those, those grants and aid line items are, are not part of that process. They're outside of it. So I, I would need to explore that further.
Thank you. Because, I mean, in certain circumstances, we're required to partner with a, a nonprofit because we're actually not able to provide those services. And that's why I was thinking there might be some opportunity there and to make sure that we're working with minority businesses. But I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the effort that you put forth over the last few years, seeing that the progress is, is great. Thanks so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, very good job. Very compelling, very thorough presentation. So thank you very much. It's really, it's really great to see over the last decade, all those numbers, how they've improved and how much greater. And then to think that we're moving forward with more resources to do this. And, and thank you also to you, Ms. Wise. I know that the staff overall, Ms. Kimble, Ms. Wise, economic development has worked very, very hard on bringing this forward. So it's been a great effort. And seeing no further questions, unless you would like to, if either of you would like to say anything more, we will stand. Did you want to say something, Ms. Wise? Okay, then we'll, we'll stand adjourned.